censoring the backs turns our children into idiots they claim it's for our safety I'll tell you what it really is removing information that empowers all the citizens the truth doesn't damage points of view that are legitimate they're trying to change amen to amen and welcome ladies and gentlemen to Dion's daily dose oh I left that open there we go today we have a very special guest and one of my favorite people I don't know if I'd say the favoritest but definitely one of my favorite people um just kidding obviously I must like her a little bit because I married her Liz Bergeron my wife and LaPorte County Commissioner candidate uh we have some interesting questions today and we have some things that I think uh I think most of you really should know but uh normally this is where you read the bio or whatever but if you're here then you read it already so without further ado my wife Liz Bergeron
hi
welcome I would like to say for the record that we really really must invest in a better lighting option for you if you're gonna be if you're gonna be doing videos for the people at home then we've got to get you a ring light like I have because it looks so much better look at my lighting compared to yours
I want to make sure you look the prettiest
is that what it is well I I do look you know the prettiest for sure now we have to we have to make it a little better but that's okay uh you don't need good lighting to answer questions so alright uh first of all I'm gonna give you a couple minutes for those people who haven't watched the show before uh I'm gonna put you on there by yourself tell people who you are and why you decided to do this
well my name is Liz Bergeron I have been a LaPorte County resident for almost nineteen years I came here when my son was just little just a little bit over a year old I came here to work at Indiana State Prison coming from Lake County kinda there the mentality is Indiana stops after Porter County so I came here for the job and was like I'm gonna move back and I fell in love with LaPorte County with its uniqueness with its festivals with the Fourth of July Parade the county fair the people so I stayed and I stayed and I spent six years at Indiana State Prison as a correctional officer two of those years I was on a hostage negotiation team luckily we never did it in real life but we practiced as if we practiced as if the next day was going to be that scenario I left there in two thousand nine and sort of explored my different professional paths of IT insurance um I I spent a couple months as a paraprofessional in the LaPorte County school system and then I ended up in social services I was a it's a really long title it's called a QIDP for a large provider in Valparaiso and then I became an Indiana Medicaid waiver case manager I earned my Bachelor of Science in Healthcare Administration in two thousand thirteen I paused for the campaign my MBA so I'll be going back after the holidays start my MBA in public administration I've been married to the host of this show for twelve years and together we have five kids
I know right it's like on the one hand it feels like just yesterday and on the other hand it feels like an eternity so we're gonna start off with a couple of rapid fire questions because I think these people need to know how badly you treat your steak um how do you like your steak I know the answer but
yeah I like it rare 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 no I like it
start off your career lying
medium well so well and I already know what he's gonna say
he likes it gentlemen she does not treat a steak right she likes it overcooked
medium well I'll do medium but that's the medium well so well
now she uh that that's her thing and that's the beauty of living in America ladies and gentlemen is you can eat a bad steak however you want it um you can eat make a good steak and make it a bad steak um by overcooking the heck out of it but I was just kidding cats or dogs
this is gonna be a weird answer dog like cats um I've never had a cat that wasn't kind of like a dog you already know this um our cats are not cat like they are dog like they are large they play I've never had a cat be a typical cat so cat like dogs yeah but I like both equally like I grew up with dogs and I grew up with cats so both
both okay
actually really large orange cats there we go there we go
yeah well our our cat reverse is absolutely huge people have remarked um at at how massive he is and how disconcerting it is he likes to stand in the window and lick the window um he's he's quite quite a formidable sight but he's a big baby
yes
um okay your favorite sport do you like sports
my favorite sport if if I'm going to play one it's starting to be pickleball if I'm going to watch one it's gonna be swimming
okay
I don't like football or baseball so but yeah that's my favorite sport swimming
why swimming
cuz I I swam in middle school and high school and I think it's super underrated um it's one of those things if you know you know you know how exciting it is how well they train how much they train what goes into it and it's just if you watch us swim meet it especially college level Olympics things like that it goes by so fast and it's so exciting and it comes down a tenth of a second
yeah there is there is a lot of physicality and uh everything that goes into swimming uh you watch it and you're like okay it's just swimming across but no it's like you said it's it's razor thin margins uh it's really the the peak of of performance there favorite restaurant
I like swimming where the women are women and the men are men okay sorry go on
I'm I'm right there with you um it it's important that everybody compete in the class that is appropriate for them I wholeheartedly agree with you um what's your favorite sport or sorry restaurant I saw that I said the sports one what's your favorite restaurant
favorite restaurants hmm I really it depends on the what I'm in the mood for so this Italian I really like Enzo's in LaPorte okay for just all American I like industrial revolution and Galpo I also like Choupes I'm dying to try India House um I go all over for work so I really have like my all time favorite restaurant is Minor Don in in Lake County um but Enzo's Choupes um yeah I would say that
okay alright when you were a kid what did you want to be when you grew up
at what age I mean I changed so much I wanted to be a marine biologist and work with manatees I wanted to be a rock climber you know I'm afraid of heights I want to be a physical therapist
okay
I wanted to be a teacher I I wanted to do careers that helped whether it was animals or more often people help them you know be better and and learn and grow
alright uh Pepsi or Coke I know the answer here
Pepsi although I will take a Green River
there you go okay I I like red cream soda um especially you know when uh go to some of the some of the more local restaurants they seem to be the only one that has red cream soda anymore the big chains don't don't carry it uh you're a Green River I'm red uh red cream soda but uh alright so what's the favorite thing about LaPorte County the thing you love the most
I love the people um Orion my twenty almost twenty year old baby he says that the people are nice around here he's he's driven in other counties and he comes back shook and dismayed about how people are not as nice on the road or not as nice in stores as they are here in LaPorte County which is true um in Michigan City around Christmas time the air smells like cookies which is fabulous the different festivals you have Hannah Fest you have scarecrow Fest you blueberry Fest although that's not LaPorte County but it's LaPorte County adjacent you have pumpkin Fest it's so unique it's so different here than any other county so that the uniqueness the people the air closes the lake that would be it
okay uh let's see
that's another thing I met you here so
yeah well then you know obviously I'm awesome uh what's uh what's your favorite movie
Clerks
what is it
Clerks
okay I I know that but I don't know if they heard you so cuz
Clerks especially Clerks two so
why why the second one up as opposed to the first one
I found the plot a little bit better I liked it I enjoyed it more than the original Clerks so I would say Clerks two
it's an absolute shame what happened to uh Kevin Smith and what he's become but okay enough with the cutesy questions it's time for the hard hitting questions right you strapped in
I'm ready no I don't have a seatbelt so let's go
okay what makes you the best candidate for Commissioner
I think what makes me the best is that I have education and job experience and skills and perspective that nobody else has
okay
I've worked in industries that the other primary candidates haven't which is gonna give me an advantage in being Commissioner
okay
I have spent my pre-primary and my primary polishing the same message but it's the same message I I don't change based on what might be popular I've put myself out there um making myself vulnerable um saying this is what I'm going to do and maybe the sentence structure has changed but the message hasn't
okay I think that's important
I'm a regular person and we have a lot on both parties all different running positions a lot of elected officials that have either forgotten what it's like to not have a paycheck that comes in from eighteen different sources and making their money off government or what it's like to work in the real world where you make a mistake like for example the county home I don't want to beat this horse even more than it's been beaten
yeah
my thing with the county home is that is a resource that is easily identifiable we knew what we had it had a generator worth thirty thousand dollars by itself we had the county home we had the land no matter how much you divide the land or argue about it land building generator very easy to identify that this is an important resource and it was mismanaged I don't care by who I don't care this person blames this person it was mismanaged I did that in any of my jobs mismanaged company funds mismanaged company resources failed to identify a a source of income or failed to identify a source that will cost the company all my things would be in a box and I would be on the phone with you saying I don't know what happened they just maybe wait we have gotten so used to our elected officials getting away with what would get any of us fired
right
I know what that's like I know what it's like to have as a taxpayer to have resources mismanaged and I know how to manage resources streamline government find resources cut costs that comes from being twenty years it yeah twenty years in the real world working and learning and studying and knowing as a regular person how to cut a budget how to make a dollar stretch how to live within your means that's what makes me the ideal Commissioner I can wear eighteen different hats at once juggle sixteen balls in the air and have twelve irons in the fire cuz that's what I've done almost my whole entire adult life
right
that there's there's elected officials who can't do that
I agree I agree and but well that leads me to my next question which is uh some people have said that they prefer people with experience in government right people have experienced they've been elected to a position before or they already served as a sitting elected official whether it's Commissioner whether it's something else so I think we should vote for them because they have experience in government you don't have any experience in government I don't either do you think that that's a bad thing or a good
well we have we have someone right now um in the highest position in our national government has a whole lot of experience has been in government a really long time and we're learning all about his experience every time we fill our car up or we go to the grocery store or we look at the cost of diapers formula or clothes that's what experience it's I don't have experience in government but I sure as heck can learn I sure as heck will when elected in November be reading Roberts Rules and as much as I can I am a research fanatic I love it I can learn and I'll continue to learn I don't have any knowledge on how to I don't wanna I don't wanna say the phrase and maybe get a strike but how to take advantage of taxpayers like me and you I no one taught me I don't know how to do that I don't know how to look in your face and lie and say I'm gonna do something and then turn around and then do the opposite I don't I don't have that in me um so I don't have the experience of learning how to make false promises
right
someone who will study and work hard and learn and continuously learn in my first four years as Commissioner but never ever ever forget who my boss is we see elected officials forget you don't matter until it's election time so I don't know how to how to screw over the taxpayer
okay yeah see you can you can say that that's fine um and you know what on these videos you can even not that we are but you can even curse it's certain things though that if like if I were to try to just to explain it to the viewers if I were to try to market this as a video for all ages rather than adults then that would cause some problems if you had cursing and uh but I I appreciate the fact that you're conscious um it's 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 all it's more about subjects than anything else that they get they get a little butthurt about um okay so we've seen the effects of government entities and policies that believe that they know better than you or me and they make decisions with no regard for us are you in favor of more government or less government
I'm in favor of limited streamlined efficient government now the government does not need to the national government doesn't need to think it runs the states this is states don't think they need to run the county the county don't think they need to run the towns and the cities government should work for the people that's why my whole campaign slogan I guess we call it slogan since August has been Liz for LaPorte County cuz I'm not doing this to get rich I'm doing this to serve my community this campaign has allowed me opportunity to opportunities to get out there and serve and help in ways that I never ever could have as not being a candidate
yeah
but
you get some fun with it too though
I did I
talk about the Easter Bunny thing cuz that was so cool and there was a lot of people that were engaged by that um how did that come about like what what made you have a costume
it came about is the last two years have been and now so hard for so many people not just in our county but all over all over the world even
yeah
and Easter's down hands down my favorite holiday I love uh literally everything about it and when your kids get older they are not as much fun they want candy and food and then they go to their rooms and they talk on their phones and all that stuff
they get expensive and they get boring
yes so it finally was we started seeing Easter egg hunts we started seeing things coming back to normal and I saw a post on Facebook that um one of my Facebook friends Kelly Keel out in LaCrosse she's with the LaCrosse Lions Club so that they were doing this Easter egg hunt it was gonna be fit so I messaged her I said can I help I want to volunteer oh we don't want to make it a campaign thing we don't want you know people feel like and I said you don't understand I won't wear a campaign shirt I I'm I'm gonna say I'll introduce myself my name's Liz Bergeron but this isn't a campaign thing I just want to help and she's like sure let's go and then kind of the way my brain works is do you have an Easter bunny well no well I think I can find an Easter bunny costume can I dress up as an Easter bunny because I may be forty two but in my brain I'm about hmm fifteen maybe even younger
yeah
and I'm also a theater kid I grew up in theater family and a performing arts family and a musical family and I have so much fun so got the Easter bunny costume from Costume World in Michigan City and I picked it up Friday if I was gonna pick it up Saturday I'm like what am I gonna do with this Easter bunny costume for a whole day before and of course our sixteen year old wanted to wear it around the house if that's how he is oh I said no I don't want to wear it around the house ooh and I got ahold of Melissa Bohachek and Melissa Bohachek works with Paladin and works with Head Start can I come and see the kids I'm not gonna talk campaign stuff I just want to bring some smiles bring some laughter cuz oh my gosh we need it
right
I turned into a big yes so it turned into that and then times got mixed up so we ended up ended up on the back of Dion's motorcycle just riding around and the smiles and the the horns and the kids we walked around Meyer um it was just so much fun so we continued it I forego I might have you know done something most candidates don't do I didn't go after the Good Friday fish fries
right
me
which was a hard thing I mean when you're running for office that's kind of the it's the Holy Grail of of days right that that Good Friday uh fish fry is almost a mandatory attendance for candidates but at the same time when I've gone to him in the past you see the dead eyes that these people give and they're like hi yes okay yeah give and give me your card yeah
I knew that everyone was going to be there and I also knew people were gonna be at the grocery store and people are stressing out about the cost of food and how do you put on a holiday for your kids for your family on a budget so I said let's go make some people laugh and smile let's you know with it and we did and the kids were great I some I scared but I get it and then we went to Kroger and did the same thing and just if I if all I get out of this whole entire process is for two days I made people forget about their problems and laugh and smile I'm I'm good I'm I'm good with that
yeah yeah it was it was overall
but I was able to maybe make you forget for a minute or two and I'll take it
yeah overall is a very positive experience but moving on
very hot
so look there's there's a lot of things obviously that I know that the people watching or the people voting don't know about you about the person that you are and one of those things that I want people to understand I want to talk about your education a bit yeah you have a bachelor's degree but I think you're the only candidate in the primary with a degree
I have not I have heard things but I have not heard them from the right people I don't I don't I think I might be okay but I don't ever want to be misquoted
okay but more importantly it because this is what matters to me the degree itself yeah you know okay great you went to college but what's important to me and what I really want to get across to people is how hard you worked to get that degree at the time you were working full time you were a mom a wife and you were dealing with really two children but one especially with special needs and at the time I had just had had back surgery and required special care talk talk about that tell us tell us that was really hard
it was a I was a very foolish teenager I think we all were and I went to school I went to college right after high school um for reasons I I won't get into I should have not but I did and I decided to tell my I remember this like it was yesterday I looked at my mom and said it'll be easier for me to go back to college when I'm an adult than it is now at nineteen twenty years old and the look she gave me she doesn't give me many looks like that but the look she gave me and I was just in my head it's gonna be easier when I'm older and part of it was I didn't really know what I wanted to do and I finally figured out that I wanted to go into dealing with long term care when I watched my grandparents both struggle with first my grandfather dementia than my grandmother and navigating that world is so hard there's so much to do and just the pain and all the family's eyes from my aunt who had healthcare POA to my dad my dad has four sisters um one had died and then finally it was just time to make the big leap three sisters and my dad and it didn't matter who was in charge of what it was hard so I said you know what I want to go back to school and I want to help people navigate this world so finally we all lost our jobs in two thousand and I want to say eight nine it was when everything went went wrong
yeah the first economic crash
first time
yeah
and it was like well there's no better time than now let's do it so I went to school online and it was supposed to be so I could work full time and it was gonna be easy peasy and then you had back surgery and an infection set it
yeah
so what was implanted had to come out in about three months it was a very severe back infection
it was it was bad
it was very very severe the doctor had said it was very close to breaking the blood brain barrier so here is three months on uh a pick line at home of very scheduled antibiotics um so we learned how to do that so there wasn't a visiting nurse coming in when there was myself and we you eventually learn how to do it yourself and the kids kind of were able to be your helper I was seeing that had to go back to work because the unemployment was running out and I found an incredible job at an incredible small company that I believe may still be around but I'm not a hundred percent sure and I was working full time two kids going to school in person was not an option
yeah
or it would have been a class a class and I would have still been earning my bachelor's
yeah
went to school online and the saying really is true you get what you put in I could have gone to school online and barely gotten through just like I could have gone to Purdue in person and barely gotten through I put everything I had into it I would work when it was allowed at at work I would work at home I would stay up till three o'clock in the morning the kids knew they grew up really grew up seeing me sitting behind a computer working so now even now me working from home when they see me in my office my green office working it's almost like second nature just like I grew up waiting for my mom to come off the South Shore from Chicago waiting for my dad to come home from the mill mom's behind the computer say your name a couple of times cuz she's probably not paying attention they know when I close that laptop they have my attention so I worked my butt off for it and in two thousand thirteen I I earned my bachelor's and I went to work for a Fortune five hundred company a few weeks later
and that just goes and that's not even touching on because it's not really necessary but I really want people to understand this doesn't even touch on my son who at at birth and his early childhood was extremely special needs um sensory integration issues uh there were there were a lot of things going on outbursts screaming um these happened very regularly um but I I don't really talk about it much because he's far better now and more importantly it you know it doesn't change how I feel about him but the important thing that I really want the viewers to understand is how hard you worked and all the things that you were going through to make sure that you got the education that you have now so that you could improve not just your lot in life but ours
right and it really it helped me get into the whole research about why I love it I was studying healthcare economics and learning about healthcare systems across the world learning about how to deal with our inverted pyramid of our aging population and what that's going to mean for county governments and city governments and state governments as well LaPorte County has something called Real Services that deals with individuals who are aging and who are disabled and most people it's easy to relate we all we know we're gonna get older and we know someone who is older but there's a big crisis coming and globally with the aging population so
it's not just here it's everywhere
commissioners whether it is in my four or eight year term or however many terms I serve or twenty years down the road it's it's coming um you need a commissioner that could work with the Board of Health and understand the Board of Health Commissioner Haney does a great job I could definitely also be of service you need a commissioner that can understand if this new jail is going to be built what does it require I am not an expert on jails but I have a pretty good idea of what a correctional facility needs so you need a commissioner that can do that you need a commissioner that can understand when the county insurance comes through and you're trying to decide what to do I dealt with that I dealt with it in a world where no matter what I did everybody was mad at me but I did it for other But I did it for other Fortune five hundred companies.
Right.
I'm not an expert, but I have a pretty good idea, better than the other candidates do.
Right, and I think it's, I think that's really important as a clarification. You're not claiming that you're an expert i- in any of these areas, but what you are saying, and correctly, is that you have experience in areas that other candidates have never, never treaded, right? And every candidate's unique, there are, there are certain candidates that maybe have experience in areas that you don't. But I question how effective those areas are when compared to things like prepping us for a new jail. Uh, I don't know if any of the other candidates have even been inside a correctional facility, much less worked in one. But that's, that's kind of a key thing. So let me ask you this, the economy is terrible right now. We talked about that a little bit earlier. Um, six and a half dollar baloney, I, I've, I've, I still. Why should people care about this race and voting in the primary at all when the day-to-day struggle is so real?
Well, I think voting in the primary is important because the primary is, I've compared it to a job interview. The ideal candidate, you need to get them through the first round of interviews, the final round of interviews is the general. You can think of it as the playoffs to get your team through to the finals. Um, but the primary is where you look at, however many people are running, look at the sheriffs. In the Democrat side, there's three, in the Republican side, there's two.
Right.
Who do you think will make the, of the two, cuz I'm gonna use the Republican one. The two, for example, sheriffs, cuz you had one yesterday, and there's another one tomorrow.
Yep.
Who these two, do you think would do a better job? If you don't vote in that primary, you may think Bob's amazing and Al is horrible and you didn't vote. And not Al, just Bob and Al, that's my grand.
We're just using names, yeah.
You may think that Al is horrible, I don't vote in the primary, it doesn't matter. Guess who goes to the general? The one you didn't want.
Right.
The one you thought is not a wise choice. And sometimes, especially in contested local races, it does come down to a handful of votes.
Oh, yeah.
Not one, maybe not two, but I talked to someone who lost a race two years ago by a hundred and twenty votes. I mean, in non-presidential primary elections, it does come down razor thin. So it does matter.
Right, right.
But now, our economy is horrible, it's horrible. Some are feeling it more than others. Uh, I drive around, I drive in five counties, I see fifty-three, although I do need to change that. Um, one of my people, my individuals did pass away, so it's fifty-two. Through five counties. Uh, gas is horrible. It, it's, it's a huge, forget all the campaign gas-related costs, I'm talking about day-to-day gas.
Yeah.
Hits the wallet hard.
Oh, yeah, yeah. A lot, most of the people, I would say even half or more of the people that run for office don't really have to worry about the day-to-day expenses, whether, you know, they're already in business and earn good money or they're already a politician and have an expense account or, or whatever. Half or more are already okay.
Right.
We're not, we're not of that class, we're regular people.
Yeah.
And we understand, you see how angry I am about six-dollar baloney? Imagine how mad I get about over four-dollar gas.
Well, I got mad because I spent three dollars a pound on chicken. I mean, it's everywhere.
Isn't that crazy? Like, oh, anyway.
Too much, anyway.
Anyway.
County government, the commissioners have nothing to do with the finances.
Right.
They can suggest to the county council, hey, I think we need this, or I don't think we should do this, or I think we should do this. County council controls the purse strings, the finances, the funding. So right now, if you think that our county is spending wrong, pay attention to that place. Um, commissioners make the policy, they make appointments to, I wanna say close to over a hundred boards.
It's a lot.
If you owe someone a favor, that would be a great place to pay, to put someone. I don't owe anyone any favors. I don't have friends in governments that I'm gonna put places because they helped me and they donate, they donated here and I donated to them. I, no, no, my, my best friends are, um, in retail and work for Amazon. Those are my two best friends, I'm not putting them in any boards cuz I don't owe them favors. We see that too much. That affects the spending of our county. Because if we're putting the wrong people, like, let's take the Board of Zoning and Appeals.
There you go.
They deal with zoning and appeals. If I got put on that board, they're, why? I would just be sitting there not knowing what's going on, and I'm getting paid to do it. We need the right people in the right boards. The wrong people in the wrong boards, it's a waste of money. So that's an important way to know the commissioner has your back financially. Uh, Johani worked with the health clinic for the county employees, and it's a phenomenal and incre- incredibly detailed and long um, service. If you have questions, I'll refer you to him because he had experience with that. So he was able to save county employees and the county government money. So having the right commissioners, having the right board appointments, having the ability to say, I'm gonna hold you accountable for billing, for transparency, for your job, is the way commissioners can save the county money and suggest cost-cutting and streamlining metrics.
Right, well, I don't, I don't think people really truly understand how many boards there are and how many people get appointed to these. And I'm not talking about specifically in Laporte County, I, it's not like I can bring up a list and say, this person shouldn't have this job. But what I can say is that we've seen consistently across the country, these people that suddenly are brought up on charges for doing things against the good of the community they're supposed to be serving. How did these people even end up with the positions? Well, they were appointed, how did they get appointed? Commissioners appoint them, at least on the county level, you know, mayors. Look at South Bend, there was a person that was, uh, brought up on charges for defrauding the city. Uh, they were in the, the, like, section eight housing or something, the Housing Authority. Um, how did that person get the job? They were appointed by the mayor, same thing on the county level here. So it's really, really important. Um, the other thing that the, I wanna talk about, and, and while the commissioners don't have authority over the finances, as you've stated, one of the big things going on in Laporte County right now that viewers care.
Uh-oh, you froze. I think what he's gonna talk about is he's gonna talk about the lit tax. This lit tax is so highly contested. What it is, is it's an increase in our local income tax. It wants to raise, I wanna say about point five oh percent.
Hey, talk about the lit tax.
What the issue is, is lit tax appears to go more towards certain areas of our county than the entire county as a whole. It is a highly contested topic. We see the county, the county board pretty much unanimously in favor of passing it. There was one county councilman who was opposed to how it was going to be done, but not that it would be done. There is a final vote, final public hearing on the twenty-fifth, and it is expected to pass. I, in the beginning, was totally a hundred percent on board with the lit tax. I was like, if it goes to our first responders and their salary and their equipment, give them whatever they need. I am not against the lit tax. However, we have funds right now. We have our county adjusted gross income tax that's been going on for thirty-plus years, where over half is supposed to go to property tax relief. And the rest can go to any purpose that is decided on by our, um, county council. If we've had a situation where year after year, we've had an incomplete budget, which was brought up at the last county council meeting, where we have our own share of having to come to our county council at a six-month interval to sort of piece together their budget. Where has all that money gone? What has it been used for? I have not been able to find an answer for that, and I have been looking. We have our county auditor, Tim Stabos, saying, hey, instead of a point five oh, we can use a point three oh and also use other funds that are available. We have some unspent ARP funds, we have ARP funds that are coming in in May, I wanna say somewhere around May. Why don't we use that until a study can be done to find out just how much we need? And also say, here's how much is going to be going to different cities, townships, departments. Is it going to the Laporte Police Department for X, Y, and Z? Is it going here for this, this, and this? A more detailed and thorough understanding of where this money is going. I being a gather all the facts, look at all the evidence, and then make a decision person. I am of the opinion, and again, I'm saying this outright, I support, I'm a daughter of a volunteer firefighter, I support our first responders. I am former law enforcement, being a correction officer, I support our law enforcement, I support our county employees. I say, let's look at where our funds for the county adjusted gross income tax is at. If we have funds there, let's use them. Let's use the unused ARP, and then let's do the study, so we're not delaying the process. What also concerns me is they're saying this lit tax could be used to build a new jail. I am not saying that we don't need a new jail, a renovated jail. I'd like to see a one-story jail out by Summit Farms, spread out, so we don't have multiple stories. That should be done through bonds. There's a certain process for things like that, for capital projects like that. The lit tax should go to our first responders, their salary and their equipment, and not be this, what it's starting to turn into is this catch-all to pay for this, and then we can use this for public safety. I, it's a very, very nuanced, very detailed debate. Let's not rush into things, let's use what we have, let's use the funds we have. Let's make sure everybody knows where their tax money is going, and let's make sure we know exactly how it's going to be used. I wanna see every volunteer fire department have a Lucas on-site with them, the city fire departments do. What a Lucas does is instead of having to do compressions for CPR, we all know compressions are mouth-to-mouth. Right cross says mouth-to-mouth is out, compressions is enough because it keeps the lungs going, which keeps the blood circulating. If you've ever done CPR, you know that fifteen minutes of compressions, that is, that is a lot.
It's exhausting.
It's exhausting. The Lucas comes in and it's very hard to watch, I, I watched a video of it, it's a very aggressive piece of equipment, but it's designed to do what it needs to do to keep your heart, to keep your blood going, your lungs going, the oxygen to your brain, so you can survive. They cost thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars. We hear, oh, well, the volunteer fire department got ten thousand dollars this year and next year for hats. Eight hundred to nine hundred dollars. How are you gonna pay for that or needed equipment and a Lucas? We, we have funds, let's use what we have wisely. Let's study what we need and then look at how can we meet that need. This is not a catch-all fund, this is what is supposed to be for first responders, salaries and equipment, not to build a new jail, not to use because we're gonna need this or that or this or that. And let's study what is needed and where it's going to go. So I don't wanna see us rush into anything. You hear economic rumors, we're on the verge of a recession, the housing bubble's gonna burst, I don't know.
Yeah.
When or if, but let's be honest with our taxpayers, let's be transparent, let's be accountable. It's my money too, let's make sure we all know where it's going. So I talked about the lit tax while you were gone.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that was the question, and, uh, I don't know what's going on with my computer, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, every once in a while, it just decides, no, I don't wanna do this right now, and it freezes, and then I have to reboot it, and then everything is usually fine. Uh, this happened way back when, when I first started doing these videos, I don't know if, uh, if y'all remember, but, uh, those who, you know, have been longtime viewers, you may remember, uh, yeah, I had to, I had to replace my CPU because it was, and then, uh, graphics card, and then everything was fine for a while. I'm not doing that again, so hopefully I can, hopefully I can, especially if you guys see how much graphics cards skyrocketed. It was absolutely insane, and that's, that's just one small symptom of, uh, this, this crazy economy and the, the, the supply chain problems and, and all of that. All right, so I appreciate you, uh, you covering the show while I had to. And of course, of course, as soon as I rebooted, it gets to the screen, it's like Windows is installing updates. I'm like, no, not right now, it always picks the worst times.
I, I can talk some.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we know, you can talk, that's for sure. All right, so one of the things that has been kind of brought up multiple times, and you mentioned it just a little bit ago, is the jail, right? This jail is old. And Chief Deputy Heeg was on last night, he talked about how jails age much faster than other buildings. We, we, we saw this at, at ISP.
Yeah.
It's, it's something that's gonna need to, to be thought about here very soon, and we're going to need to start planning that process. That's something that I believe you're uniquely qualified for, because not only do you understand the, the, the correctional side of it, but I can also speak as someone who's been on the other side of the bars and the needs and things that would make it, make people less likely to get unruly and angry. Uh, when I, those of you who maybe are new viewers, when I was a teenager, I was a very, very bad boy. Um, so, uh, I, you know, I, I spent a, a little bit, a little bit of time, but obviously not enough to prevent me from working as a correction officer, no felonies or anything like that, I was just a little bad. Um, so here's, here's kind of the, the, the rub, right? So speaking of jails and legal situations, a growing number of residents have made the following question their main point, the only thing they care about when it comes to picking a new commissioner. If elected, will you fire the commissioner's attorney, Shaw Friedman?
Yeah, I love answering this question and I hate answering this question, and let me tell you why I hate answering this question. Number one, there was an individual who made the exact same promise that I will make after I'm done addressing why I hate this question. When you end up following someone who made a promise and then they went back on it, it is very hard to get people, understandably so, to believe you when you're saying the same thing that someone else already said. I can't answer for why they did what they did. I can't answer for why they changed their mind. I have my own opinions, I have my own thoughts, but those are, and I share them with him and, and nobody knows but that person, that person broke a promise that they made.
They did.
They did. The other reason that I hate answering this question is because there is more to me and my platform than this one question.
Right.
This question falls in line with accountability and transparency. It falls in line with paying, I, I have many, many ideas on how to save the, our county government money. Um, fully accountable, one is mileage, clear and transparent billing. We are not getting that from, and not the county attorney.
Right.
The Board of Commissioners Attorney that serves at the leisure of the board, just like we all serve at the leisure of our employer.
Yep.
A bill is tossed, I read an article, pay me a hundred and fifty dollars. I could never go to my boss when I do my expense report. I put something like that with no justification, or say, hey, I, I took care of six other individuals that aren't my individuals, pay me for doing a job that I'm not supposed to do.
Right.
Somehow, we have grown okay with that, and now we are not. Our government officials, some of them have grown okay with this individual doing that.
Yeah.
We as taxpayers have not, how much money has been spent that should not have been spent that could go to other things?
Way too much.
Way too much. I do not make promises lightly. I have not made any promises in my campaign except one that I have stated pre-primary at a four-six-three GOP breakfast, when I announced my pre-primary campaign. I made this promise at my launch party. I made my, I made this promise at a March twenty twenty two precinct meeting at the G O P headquarters. And again, at my final speech, which is on my Facebook, if you would like to watch it. Just last week. I will do one of two things. One, I will either make a motion or two, I will second a motion. Two.
Who gets to it first?
Depending on who gets to it first. To end the employment of Shaw Friedman as the La Porte County Board of Commissioners Attorney. I also make this part B to it. I will call for past billings as far as I can go back. Maybe it's just a year, maybe it's two. Maybe I can't go back at all because this is a brand new commissioner board. As far as I can go back, I will request to go back to have his billings audited. If they're right and they're fine, then there's nothing to worry about. I don't know why people who seem to be on this team are so upset about this, are so worried about this.
Yeah.
If it's all right, then it's all right. This is not a witch hunt. This is not a personal vendetta. This is me saying there is a situation that is being taken advantage of. And I don't want to pay any more money than I don't have to. So I will as much as I can, as one person, make the motion or second it to fire Shaw Friedman. It's up to the other two commissioners. I know Commissioner Hany has called for this. I feel confident in saying that he will either make that motion and I will second it, or I will make the motion and he will second it and it will be two to one. And we'll have to be looking for a new, um, commissioner attorney. Now that puts me out there. I have said this, this puts me out there. If you don't, if you have struggled to believe what I'm saying, I'm asking you to take a leap of faith on me and to believe me. And if I don't do this, come to every single commissioner meeting. I want to also bring back public comment throughout the meeting. Call me out every month for four years and then don't vote for me. Because I make this promise and I don't make promises lightly and I intend to keep this.
I I have heard consistently from citizens of La Porte County that they simply are tired of the drama. As far as the commissioner board, the, the county council board. Whether you're, whether you're for or against, uh, the, the county commissioner's attorney. This will end the drama. It will absolutely end the drama because he will no longer be employed. Uh, look, I as I'm just going to go ahead and say it. Uh, Ronald Reagan gave the eleventh commandment. Uh, and the eleventh commandment is thou shall not speak ill of another Republican when you're running, right? So I'm not going to speak ill, but what I am going to talk about is some very dis disturbing behavior that I've noticed from a couple of the other candidates. Uh, we're not going to get into details, but I urge everyone to pay attention, really pay attention. Go, all voters, I believe, should be educated voters. Should look at not just what the person says on their campaign page. You should look at what they say. If their, if their social media isn't public, that kind of tells you something right there. Um, if they don't have a, a specific campaign page and their social media is not public. Now, let me, let me clarify. Uh, somebody running for office should not be completely open to unlimited scrutiny of every aspect of their lives. That's a little much. Um, resident, that's a whole other thing, but someone just running for county positions. Um, I mean, you shouldn't be able to show up at their house unannounced and, and you know, there, there are certain things that I believe in. Um, but at the same time, transparency is absolutely critical. If someone tells you something and then a month later they change what they said before, what's going on there? And I'm not talking about anyone specifically, but do your research. Look into people, learn what they've said in the past, learn how they voted in the past, if they served. Look deeper, look beneath the surface, learn what these people are about. And that applies to, it applies to Liz as well. Look, look at her, look at what she said on social media, the comments that she's given. That's really where you can tell who people are, how they respond to comments, whether they respond to comments. Uh, I used to get criticizing comments all the time. People would, you know, come onto my pages and say some truly outlandish stuff. And that's okay. I believe in people's free speech. The only thing I will, I will block somebody like on my other video, I had somebody who was just spamming nonsense. I will block that because it's distracting and you're not actually communicating. You're just spamming. I'll block spam. But you want to disagree with me? I'm okay with that. Come on, come on to my page, disagree with me. We'll have a discussion about it. But there have been, there have been some, some concerning things that have happened, uh, by other candidates. Uh, I urge everyone to become educated about the people that you're voting for. This, this doesn't just apply to commissioner. This applies to up and down the ballot, everybody you can vote for. You should go in knowing who you're going to vote for. Don't just vote for a name you recognize. Don't just vote for somebody because you saw their name on the sign outside. Or you recognize the name. If you don't know who it is, it's okay to skip that race. It's okay to go, you know, I don't know enough, know enough about either of these people to make an informed decision. That's perfectly all right. Leave it to the people who do.
Right.
To make those decisions. I put your, I put your information at the bottom. Is there anything else that you want to tell people?
I am just like you. I am not part of this political machine, this, this. I've heard it called two-party, one ticket, which really hurts me that there are people who run on promises, knowing that they're never going to deliver them, claiming to be one party or the other. Or what party? Only claiming that because they think that that's what's going to win the popularity contest, sell them, get them where they want to be. And then their allegiance switches to whatever party they, they are behind closed doors. I am me. Uh, I'm conservative. I'm a constitutional conservative. I also like to look at both sides of the argument. Vote for what my people, my people, my constituents want, not necessarily what I want. I was asked on sound off. Would I vote for marijuana? I don't have that power. But if La Porte County said unanimously, let's bring it here, whether I agree with that or not, that's what the people who elected me want. That, whether they want it or not, if that's who elected me wants it, that's my boss, then I, I do what they want. I, I'm not kissing a ring. I'm not making any deals. I'm just me. I'm just someone who wants to make a difference and make our county, I say all the time, stronger, safer and more successful. So my kids want to come back here and settle down and raise their family and set their roots down. We have too many that are going to college and then going elsewhere because they don't feel like La Porte County can offer them what other places can. I want to make us the envy of the state. And I have ideas and I can do that. So I have one phenomenal idea left in these last two weeks of campaigning. So if anyone wants to donate and see that come to life, I would greatly appreciate it. If anyone wants a sign for their yard, my signs don't look like anyone's, anyone's sign. Oh, different, but they're so simple. Uh, let me know, let Deanna know, we're going to sign out to you. Don't just vote on name recognition, even mine. If you don't think I'm my person, fine. If you think someone else's vote, what is a smart and educated vote?
Right.
I'm ready to take La Porte County forward. I'm ready to answer to all of the residents, no matter what's town, no matter what city, no matter what religion, creed, color, race. I'm running to serve you. I would be so incredibly appreciative and honored for your vote on or before May third. And if you want to sign and you want to donate, the information's running across the screen below and regardless of what happens in May, I've had a blast talking to everyone, getting to meet everyone and doing this and and I, I thank you for everyone who's taken time to talk to me.
Ladies and gentlemen, Liz Bergeron. Uh, we obviously appreciate you coming on. Um, somebody asked a question, how are we able to do the video, uh, side by side like this? Yeah, I'm in my office. She's in her office and, uh, to her computer. She's just like another guest. I had her dial in remotely, even though she's, you know, right over there. Um, right up the hallway from me, but we just did it like any normal guests. Uh, we used to have her sit, you know, like right here or over here.
I took my desk back and so that's why.
I miss that desk. This desk sucks. I hate this desk. I know I don't hate it. I, I really, really don't like this desk. I miss her desk. It was big. It was nice. Uh, wood, just jelly. Stop it. I'm just kidding.
I'm going to be still knocking doors, going to breakfasts. If you see me, if you see me at Myers and I look grumpy, it's because I just spent three dollars a pound on chicken, but just come say hi. I, I promise. I'm, I'm super friendly and I love to talk. I love to answer questions. And then on April twenty fourth, me and Deanna are going to be at an event out in Hobart. Um, I will be speaking, Deanna will be speaking, Jennifer Ruth Green will be speaking. She's running for congressional district one. Diego Morales, um.
He's running for secretary of state, right?
Diego's running for secretary of state. I'm also running for convention delegate and that'll be on the ballot. You'll see my name twice. Give me two votes.
Me too. Me too. I do more, I do more votes than her. Make sure you vote for me. Um, I, you know, you recognize my name more. Make sure that I at least beat her. Um, no, I'm just, I'm just kidding.
But that's the, that's where the real, I think, response, not the real responsibility. There's a responsibility in being a convention delegate that is just as important as commissioner. So I would appreciate two votes on election day. And I can't wait to see what what happens in May and all the way to November. It's going to be a red wave.
I, I truly believe that as well. Uh, I think we're going to see a huge change, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, a huge change. I'm just kidding. Uh, yeah, so I get this a lot, the head, the, the, the head, yeah. Yeah. Oh, she says, uh, when is the event in Hobart?
Twenty fourth. It starts at
What time does it start? Let me
Uh, Mary, if you want to just Facebook message me and I'll shoot you the time. It's at Gino's Banquets in Hobart. Um, I know it, it, for me, it's, it's going where I work. It's going back home to Lake County, but we need La Porte County people to go out there and represent La Porte County. And, and, you know, show up and show them what La Porte County is all about, but it's going to be fun. It's a potluck. So you bring a dish. Um, it's going to be so much fun and they are actually putting bins where you can write a question and you can put it in the bin and they will ask us that. And I answer just about anything. I really don't like talking about the kids.
It starts at three.
I don't like talking about like personal stuff about the kids. I'll share their name and their age, but the family, I don't ever want any opponent, any candidate to come after my kids. I would never come after theirs. So, but other, otherwise I'm an open book.
Hold on, let me, uh, let me show the people here because I, I really want everybody to know about this. Um, let me make sure I got it right here. Um, that's it. Yep. Okay, there it is. Okay. So I know it's kind of, uh, small. Let's see if I can get it bigger. There we go. Okay. So it is Sunday, April twenty fourth at three P M. It is going to be at Gino's Banquet Hall. That is nineteen sixty seven East Thirty Seventh Avenue in Hobart. It's a potluck.
The Hobart, Maryville. If you know Lake County, it, it goes from Hobart, Maryville, Sherrville, Hobart, Maryville. So it's around there.
So that is where it's going to be and I'd love to see everybody there if you can make it. Uh, I'd love for our La Porte County peeps to come out. Um, if you can make it, we'd really appreciate it. I am going to attempt to live stream from the event. The last time I, I've tried doing this remotely before. And it just, I'm going to tell you, I can live stream just fine, but the comments section, I just can't keep up with because it's so, it's different feeds from different areas. I just, I can't do the comments. The way that it's a phone, it just doesn't work. But I can live stream it. I can show everybody. I'll bring my little tripod so I can set up the camera and you guys can at least check it out for those who can't make it. But comment wise, I won't be able to, uh, to answer your, your questions until, uh, he said, this is, he's heading in the birds right behind Paragon. Okay.
Okay, I know where that is. Hi, Paul. I was like, I haven't seen Paul's comments.
He had a couple earlier. She just screenshot it. Have to leave before dark, but oh, yeah. That, which is one reason I understand, not everybody can, can make it. For those of you that can't, I'm going to do my best to stream it and give you guys the, uh, the best possible experience remotely that you can get that I'm able to provide anyway. Uh, I don't have a last time I tried doing the, the remote, I got my video stricken because there was copyrighted music in the background. And then I couldn't keep up with the comments and the screen froze and there was just the, anyway. But I'm going to try. I'm going to do my best for you because y'all are awesome. So. All right. So that was, that was Liz Bergeron. We're going to have, uh, one more of these Q and A sessions right before primary, uh, I think next week. And that'll be it. We'll be It's coming up very quick, yeah. Uh, we, we're going to zoom into the primary and hopefully we will both be going to the, into the general. Uh, I am unopposed to my primary, so no matter what, I'm going into the, the general election, but I, it'd, it'd be awesome to be a Bergeron Bergeron ticket.
No matter what, our household will be celebrating on May third. Does the Bergeron, his success is my success, my success is his success, success. I can't stop. It's been a long day. We're going into the general, whether it's two of us, two, yes, two, but you know, we, we saw things happen last election we never thought would.
Yeah.
So one for sure is going into the general and it's going to be a celebration and we're going to have a good time. Good. Thank you for working the polls. That's super important. You can work the polls unless you're related to somebody on the ballot, whether that's for a convention delegate.
Yep.
Township board. If you're related to somebody on that ballot, you can't work the polls at the county that they're on the ballot.
Right. Which is why none of our household can work the polls in La Porte County or
But go to another county. We need honest poll workers that are going to help ensure and protect our democracy.
Yes.
Um, so work the polls. It's, it's, it's so needed and so appreciative. Um, so, yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Uh, I appreciate it. She appreciates it. And remember, become an educated voter. Uh, tomorrow night, seven P M, we're going to have Andrew Andy Morse on. He is the other candidate for La Porte County Sheriff and he's going to be joining us. And we're going to have the same questions, maybe slightly different because obviously his, his experience is a little different.
So only Republican candidates only the Republican candidates for sheriff decided to come on?
Yeah. So let me, let me tell you, I invited all the candidates onto my show, uh, Democrats, Republicans, everyone. Um, there is no, as far as I'm aware, there is no libertarian candidate for, uh, sheriff and we won't know if there are any independents until after the primary election. However, I invited all three of the Democrat candidates. Two of those candidates told me that they would come on the show. I have heard from Zero. Them have answered my multiple attempts to get them onto the show. Now, as you've seen, for those of you who have watched me interview people from other parties, I'm fair. I'm not, you know, uh, uh, slanted. I ask tough questions. Maybe they don't want to ask tough, answer tough questions, or maybe they just don't like me. I'm okay with that. They cannot like me. Uh, personally, I think I'm awesome, but you know.
No, I don't think the Democrats like you after legal women voters. I don't think.
I, maybe that was it.
I heard it. I don't think they like you very much.
Yeah. I mean, maybe, maybe that had something to do with it, but no, seriously, um, that they won't answer me. Uh, I've sent multiple texts, multiple, uh, hey, when are you coming on the show? Do you still want to come on the show? Your, the offer's there. And remember, these people have said previously that they would.
It is their loss because this is a hoot.
I agree. I agree. So, but we are going to have, uh, the, the two Republicans will have come onto the show. Chief Deputy Heeg was on last night. Officer Morse would be on tomorrow and we can compare them directly. We can see who do you want to be your sheriff? Get out there, vote in the primary. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your time. God bless you. God bless Indiana and God bless the United States of America.